Alright, so we'll call the meeting to order at five P M. First up on the agenda is to approve and sign the minutes from this September nineteenth meeting. Any comments on those minutes?
No, I'm moved to accept them as preferred.
All those in favor? Aye. You'll sign them next time you're in the office, Scott? Next up, um, we have a guest here, Mike Zarnowski.
Yeah, right.
Um, from the, um, Central New Hampshire Climbers Association. Welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, thanks for reaching out.
Yeah. So I guess I said my email too, where originally kind of set up this meeting because we had sent a letter to the Woodstock Conservation Commission saying we were looking to be purchase a piece of property, put in parking there. The letter came back saying we weren't allowed to use Marion Woods, we weren't allowed to use Russell Crags, uh, like any of the language which, I mean, um, like short of first amendment, just gloss over that, like the fact that Russell Crags has been a climbing, like a place since nineteen thirty-one on AMC maps, climbed there since the sixties. Um, friends of Marion Woods, it's just that's what the Marion family kind of wanted, so the letter coming across saying, don't use Marion Woods in your messaging, it seems kind of, it just, it feels, I guess I'm really trying not to say this, but it feels attacking, it feels, um, and I'd like, uh, were, sorry, I have some notes, but getting a little worked up. Yeah, so the language in the letter was just, just felt very harsh to us and we had a meeting together and we actually put together a letter that we didn't end up sending because then I attended the Conservation Commission meeting and I can say that the tone of the letter was probably a lot harsher, I thought, than the meeting, it seemed in the meeting, there's probably some loud voices that get into print, whereas I think there's a lot of people trying to be good public servants there. So, um, we kind of tabled that letter, but we still wanted to come and introduce ourselves and.
I mean, I know the Conservation Committee is still working through the whole management plan and, and how to properly use or how that property will be used.
Yeah. Can I ask who sent you the letter?
Um, it was sent through the Conservation Commission, James Cheeseborough was the, was the person who wrote it. He afterwards did say in the next meeting that he was going to have somebody else maybe send letters in the future because his wording might not have been as nice as somebody else's. So like, like I said too, that's part of it, like going to the meeting, I could see that there's a lot of people there trying to like really just be good public servants.
Yeah.
But there's some loud voices getting their, their opinions out and that's what's getting printed. That's what's getting mailed to us, that's what's ending up in the meeting minutes. And it feels like, it feels like, and we also know what the vote was and, and we also like to, to, you know, we know the history, we know what the vote was, we know all that. And at this point, it feels like there's, we're reading the minutes, seeing like, it's like they're trying to allow recreation, well, not allow them climbing. And, um, and like in the latter two, it was like, not only is it just sort of our right to be able to use these words because they're words to raise money, um, but the Marion family donated this land to the public. And the public should be able to use this language, so it feels like it's kind of like, oh, hush, hush, don't tell people about Marion Woods. There's another thing that comes across in that letter, in our opinion. We all, like, so the other thing is, we don't feel like we're doing anything wrong. We're trying to alleviate the town concerns, we're trying to provide a park, we're, we're trying to raise money. We're trying to provide parking, but when we've gone into town of Thornton, Thornton was super involved, like happy, like loved the idea, they were involved. Um, so we went to, um, National Forest, they were like, we, we would love you to put a parking lot, we want private donation, like private work on public, like for public benefit, so it feels con- contrary to all the other stuff we're getting, um. We can, um, they're saying that they won't, let's see, or try to slip them. Yes, so yeah, and then like that thing here, so climbers. I mean, anybody who recreates outdoor, like we were just saying, the artist's butt footage, like I think twenty years ago, people didn't really think about other people, but I think any group like organized group that's recreating outside these days really understands that we have responsibility to take care of the land because otherwise, if we won't have these opportunities, we won't have these things that we want. I mean, we're, we're looking for a future. You know, and we're looking to provide access and that's like, that's really what we're trying to, so we're trying to provide access to public land and, and not provide access, we know there's already access to it, but I know there's considerable concern about parking on the road. That continues to be parking on the road, parking on the road, parking on the road. So here it is, we're trying to raise a couple of hundred thousand dollars and put it in a parking lot and we're getting positive feedback from everywhere except for the W C C. And that's why we're kind of coming to you with this concerns. Um, we know they're working on a plan too.
Yep.
But we're also slightly concerned that they're going to try to slide language in there that's going to be detrimental to us and kind of sneak because it does feel to us like they're trying, there's certain members trying to sneak in language that's going to prohibit climbing, remove anchors, do those types of things. And like I said, we didn't send the letter because I felt like sitting there, it didn't feel as much like that, but there's still that, that huge concern to us.
Well, I think you're right, that letters, communication can be misunderstood sometimes in written form versus in public form, um, and so, um, I can certainly see that. I think as you're working through, I think as they're, they continue to work through the, the management plan, um, I think there is, there has been question of the being publicized, like on websites and stuff like that, and maybe that's where, where you're potentially using Marion Woods and the Crags to publicize raising funds, maybe that's where a little bit of a red flag has come up for them. And maybe that's just something that needs to be floated past the town's attorney to say, hey, we had to take, you know, we had to have them take this down off a mountain project because of stuff written in the deed, is this the same matter? Maybe there's some.
I can speak to that a little bit, is that mountain project is, is, is what it is, it's open forum, it's like Facebook. People who post on mountain project are people, they're giving away their information for free, it's an open forum. Mountain project may raise, may make some money, but nobody, so I know one of the big concerns was they were like, oh, climbers are making money off of that, which anybody posting on, so like, like I said, it's kind of like Facebook, so I don't know exactly how that works with the deed, but nobody has really, I mean, I've posted on mountain project, lots of people post on mountain project, but I just like getting logged in, make an account and you can write whatever you want.
Right.
Within reason, you're not, the administrators aren't going to take it down. The other thing was in the letter, we said we were, we were, we're a nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're, you're going to use friends of, we're going to use Marion Woods and Russell Crags as a way to raise money. Um, they're telling us we can't do that because, and we don't see anywhere like as a nonprofit, we're not using this commercially, we're not using this industrially.
Yeah.
We're not.
I think that's the part that we need to run by Laura.
Correct.
Is, or by the town attorney, is like that whole idea what is, what is the commercialization of that, like is it, if you're using that property and using that name to raise funds, is that a red flag or not? And I think that's.
Well, I don't think we own Russell Crags, but I mean Marion Woods.
Marion Woods, right, the access to the Crags.
Right.
We don't, right.
But I will.
We can send her in this.
Have that conversation with the town attorney and then.
So I can bring up what, um, what James Cheeseborough continues to bring up is that there's the word institutional use in the deed. And he keeps saying that you're an institution and you can't use the property, he's used that to, to basically prove to, to not let friends of Marion Woods have any input, just not have any outside organization have any input. Meanwhile, they're reaching out to the R C A, Ronny Climbers Association for input. And they're telling the friends of Marion Woods, you can't have any input. And the Central New Hampshire Climbers, you can't have any input.
What do you mean, Ron?
I interrupted.
Where are you? The Central New Hampshire Climbers.
And that's not the wrong name.
No.
So you're different than the wrong name and then is a.
It's our own nonprofit, we, we, our, our newer nonprofit, we were working as a subset of R C A, but they said it'd be easier if we just get our own thing because they're busy too.
Friends of Marion Woods then?
They are another organization that was involved in the, um, I guess during the voting and they've been involved trying through the whole thing process, they are, um.
A group of users.
Yeah, some, some, we have, we have some crossover in our members, but we are.
Buying the parking lot, who's trying to buy the parking.
The Central New Hampshire Climbers Association.
And you are the ones that have been told you can't use the, okay, just want to make sure I know what a parking lot.
Can't use what?
They can't.
Use the language friends of, can't use the language Marion Woods or Russell Crags. Which is like when Apple.
The property's in Thornton. The property you're looking at buying is from Wilford A R. And it's entirely in Thornton. So what Thornton does is what Thornton does, what Woodstock does and Marion Woods are two entirely different things.
Okay.
Um, and I would like to also.
But what, what I'm trying to say is that we were basically got a letter, cease and desist letter saying we can't use Marion Woods or Russell Crags, which are words that are part of the public language.
We'll get a copy of that letter.
That's kind of a first amendment thing, like, and even Marion Woods, like the town might have Marion Woods, but was that, is that like, I mean, I know at one point, Apple tried to trademark pond and they were like, it's, it's English.
Yeah.
So like.
Well, we'll, we'll give a copy of that letter as well and, and forward that to the town attorney and have her review.
Yeah.
All of that documentation.
And, and, and no language anywhere in any part, I've been connecting to this since the outset. Um, there were two people on the commission when I volunteered to be the Blackman representative and nowhere have we ever said that we're trying to stop climbing on Russell Crag, ever.
No, I understand.
If something has gone awry in communication between.
I didn't say they're trying to stop, they said.
But I just want, I just want you to be certain, and I've done an interview with a, with a journalist, I told him, and I don't know when that interview is going to be published or where, um, but, um, we have never discouraged or said that we were going to start climbing.
Actually, in the, in the very first meeting, it, it, in the very first, uh, Conservation Commission meeting minutes when this came up, because I've read all of the minutes, I've documented many, many times. Um, their question was asked to the lawyer, how can we legally make them stop?
Was that before town meeting though?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so, but not to say it's never happened, so to just say it's never happened is a stretch, but I'm just saying it. I understand that you guys are careful with your words and I understand what's going on, but we feel certain things like, like for instance, the Falcons, they, um, certain people want to ban climbing there during, um, whatever it is made such like this. So currently Chris from the Audubon Society has been nineteen years, he's been climbing Falcons there, working with climbers since two thousand and four, to help him get up to the cliffs, to help him work with the Falcons, and we've been posting Falcon closures, actually, so Falcon closure were posted at one point in the early two thousands and then the climbing dropped off in that area and this public closure stopped. And as it picked up again, we actually contacted the Audubon Society and Chris came out and started posting those closures again. Stuff like this during the last meeting, we're just, we're being told to sit there and shut up and we're watching, just they're, they're trying to figure this all out.
Let me explain to you how.
There's nineteen years.
We have workshops here, we had one last week. Workshop is if, as we're, we're working through things, if every five minutes somebody's doing this, it would take us years to get through this. What you should do maybe, take notes, memorand, when things go and when this gets passed, the select boards, curfew or inspection, there will be a public hearing, you can ask all the questions you want. But as far as trying to steer the dialogue one way or another, or try to interrupt every time you don't agree with what, because we're just batting around ideas, we're just spitballing up here.
Well, you must have workshops and then when you go to your monthly meeting, you must be regrouping in your monthly meeting of what you've done in your workshops. At that point, they should be able to have public input.
All right, now it's not that way.
I mean, because if like you guys.
Well, workshop, workshop and the meeting are the same thing.
No, they have some advertised meetings, like ones coming up.
It's going to be a workshop.
You can. No, they've been posted separate.
Posted as a public meeting, so.
It is, but.
And then they have workshops that they post separately without the public participation is what they've been doing, because I've been posting them. And then they have their monthly scheduled ones that. So they have been doing them separate and they're very specific when they asked me to post them, you know, not to have the public participation, which is what we do, we both are separate and then we have our list of so they would have once a month separate from that to come in and be able to talk.
Or they could allow, no, no meeting is required.
You're not required to, but you could, you could have it.
At the end of, after discussion, allow input to take notes.
And you could also request to be on their agenda, you know, of that monthly meeting, just like you did ours, they operate the same, all boards operate the same. So if you want to be added to an agenda, I'm sure they have, you'd have to ask them their timeframe to discuss these things. You could send an email, if you wanted to do it, copy me and send it, I'll send it out to them and say, I want to be added to your October twenty-third. Um.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Whatever it is, um, meeting. Um, could you add me to your agenda and what your topic is going to be? Just like you did here.
Don't have to speak to that, so.
I would also like to say that the makeup of the board is, um, very diverse, a lot of climbing people there, um, a lot of people that, that, um, um, familiar with organizational, how we work with, with Robert Rules of Order, which is a parliamentary speaker, which is what we have agreed to, same as this committee, any committee all the way through Congress. And, um, the climate community is well represented at that point.
Um, so, so to, yeah, um, the last meeting was actually listed as a public meeting and then the day before, or the day of the public meeting, they changed it to a workshop. With so no public participation, so it was originally listed on our website as that, and then the one on the twenty-fifth is currently listed as a public meeting. And that was one of our, one of my concerns personally was, are they going to change this last minute? Um, which I did, I'll still come and observe, I'm not allowed to speak, but they did change it last minute last time, so I'm wondering if that.
I didn't look at their schedule.
What I'm concerned that, that that may happen again.
Well, I think.
If there's differences of, of opinions on how that was supposed to work.
Next step for you would be tonight, tomorrow, whatever, later this week, is to email, is to email the Conservation Committee and you could see, see.
And, and even like what we're requesting.
They did. Okay, I didn't realize it was already on the schedule, so I see what you're saying now that they, they, I thought they were asking me to post a separate meeting, but it was the one that was advertised, so.
As a workshop.
No, they posted, they hadn't posted as a meeting, but it was already on their public schedule, I see what.
They posted as a workshop, but it was already public.
Okay.
And I didn't check.
So the next one right now is posted as a public meeting.
It's October twenty-third at five P M. on their schedule that they put out like us.
Okay, great.
So that, it was here on their schedule and then I had gotten an email. And so I did a separate announcement thinking that they were having like I do when we do our workshops.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And because I, and they wanted no public participation.
Yes, I had a learning session.
Yeah, I thought they were having an added.
Okay.
Because, yeah, I know Kate.
I think it's worth, worth sending that email in.
Kate from Friends of Marion Woods was told that she would need to come in because of what's in public and then she ended up coming and then she almost left and then she was like, oh, I can stay, so there was a lot of confusion because of that.
You definitely stay and listen, there's no, they're open to, to anything that.
And I, I can't guarantee you can get on the agenda either, every, every board runs their own agenda, but you should ask ahead of time to be put on if you have something you want.
This one doesn't hold sway over how they operate. They make up their own rules or.
I understand, but this is the, so why I'm also coming is because it's the board that's in, in charge of like, they're signing off on a plan and enforcing it, if, if there's an enforcement to be had, so we want to introduce ourselves and kind of get here before, because, uh, because when so we got a draft of the plan, we got, which is, which is being edited, but the draft of the plan is scary as a climber, if you read the draft of the plan, and we've gotten the letter, we've got a few other things, we wanted to come to you knowing how the town voted, so you didn't just get something saying, oh, this is a plan, the W C C, alright, great, no public input, we'll see you later, and then I was like, dying to say something. Um, and, and, and like I was saying about the Falcons and stuff.
There's going to be quite a bit of officers going, this is not a, a, hit it down in two or three months, this is going to take a long time to work out. Um, and what we say at one meeting may not be exactly what we say in the next, it's working out through a process that's going in and seeing what's going to work and what's not going to work, it's not.
Allow them to share their thoughts and comments, it doesn't.
Meant to be onerous in any way.
That it will be written into the, the plan. Okay, we're going to reach out to the attorney and ask a question on that too as well. Great.
Do you want to, um, you want me to email you what I find out, you want me to do a call?
Oh, that would be fine, I could email you, wonderful.
Um.
I mean, just, I guess, a couple of small things to bring up along here, as long as I'm here, is that, um, we're, at this point, we're being told, don't build trails, you can't do this, you can't do that, and the couple of people on the Conservation Commission now are looking at plans to have a property log. So it started off as, oh my god, climbers are destroying the land and now they're making a logging plan.
No, it's not a logging plan, it's a, it's a plan that they're required to do in a forest or to come in to keep a healthy forest, which is different than.
Yeah.
Not wanting to get off the money or anything like that, no.
Well, I don't know, you won't be able to.
See, this is sometimes how things get kind of sidetracked here. Um, nobody's made any plans to log any of that, and we need to make it available for logging. That's a difference in terms.
It, that's not what the deed said. That's not what the deed said though, that's, so that's one of the things where.
Oh, it does, it does say forestry and.
It says may be, may be used for agriculture and forestry and to ensure the agriculture productivity of this.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the document.
Because one of the things that, that I think is, people have pigeon themselves into this forestry thing when that isn't necessarily, the deed doesn't say that it has to have a logging plan, it has to have a forestry plan. And, and this is one of the things where I feel like several people on the commission have pigeon themselves into some, some narrow reading of the language of the deed.
Well, I think, we'll take, I think we'll take everything that's been communicated today, I think the next step is to run, run it by the town attorney. Have her review it and then, um, find out what she says about public input on the master plan as well. Okay? So it's our next steps.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you for coming in today.
And requesting to be on their agenda when you want to.
Make sure you send that email so that when there is another public meeting for them, that you have that request in.
We like, before our meeting, as you know, it's Friday before at noon to get on our Tuesday meeting, so I'm sure they have like a so if you want to be on their agenda, you should do it.
Yeah.
Probably.
No, I, I mean, that's yeah, I mean, is it worth being going on the agenda because we just keep getting told that we're not going to have, you know, I don't know if it's worth being put on the agenda at this point.
If you want your voice heard, that's the way to do it.
That's what I'm just done with constructive. You know, if you've seen a draft, that draft of, um, whatever plan, we have not, I have not seen the draft of that plan, so I can't speak to it, nor will I. Um, but I would certainly say that if you have some comments or suggestions, that is well worth submitting them, either if you don't want to speak in the public meetings, submit them via email and you can again, see, see the administrator here. And, um, it will be shared that it gets, gets out to the commission committee or the committee members and then, um, yeah, always comments are never, they're never guaranteed that they'll go into the document, but at least they're shared and, and spoken.
And I will share them with both boards.
Yep.
I'll make sure they get out.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Um, we did have another email here from Paula King. I would just say, uh, she's not here to speak to it, um, she's just got a bunch of questions regarding, um, Gordon Pond Trail again. And we've been trying to connect with the Forest Service to get a session, a listening, commenting, conversation session on the books, um, to answer these questions and hear, you know, voice opinions or hear the voices of opinions. Um, we have yet to succeed, it has been a busy fall, so we're hoping, um, uh, I've reached out and I'm hoping that hopefully this week, they'll, they'll come back to Judy, if not, we'll, um, uh, maybe use another contact that we have in the Forest Service to, to see if we can move that along, so, um, so Paula, if Paula happens to reach out tomorrow and say anything, just tell her that.
We're trying.
We're trying and we're, we're going to get there, so.
I just wanted it to be a part of the record that you got, like.
Yep, and so, okay. Um, next up, we have Joe Kenna.
John Kenna.
John, Joe, sorry, John, um, Kenna from Text My Gov.
Yeah.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me okay on your end?
Sure can, thanks, John.
Awesome, well, hey, thanks for having me and Spencer on today, um, I just want to make sure we're conscious on time here, does, um, ten to fifteen minutes still line up with today's board meeting?
Alright, just go for it.
Okay, perfect, um, and then I have Spencer on the line, he'll basically be walking you through the program, so um, if you guys have any questions, just feel, feel free to shoot those out at any time and I'll go ahead and turn over the time to him.
Great.
Perfect, yeah, hopefully y'all can see me maybe and then hear me as well. Uh, appreciate me with y'all. Just as some background for everyone, um, we had the chance, uh, to meet with Judy and Cheryl, I believe it was back in June, it's been flying by the time, so we're going to go through and just explain to you kind of what we had showed and, and walk through what we've done working with some other towns. So I'll share my screen here too, uh, but we'll, we'll dive into it. Um, let me see if this, this one says I can't share my screen, would you guys have the ability to give me the option to share my screen? Is that possible?
If we co, make you a co-host, can you share now?
Yeah, it works great now, thank you so much, appreciate it. Should say Text My Gov on the screen now and then, perfect. So the whole point of Text My Gov, we just use texting and we work with local municipalities to just help with communications. And there's three ways that our program can help. Um, the big thing that we had all spoken about together was using Text My Gov as a way to be able to send out text alerts to residents about different items that are going on within the town. Uh, the unique thing with our program is that we offer you guys the ability to send out any kind of text alert that you want. It can be an emergency, it can be weather, it can be general, uh, maybe offices closed, meeting updates, any kind of alerts you guys would like to send out to your residents, you can. Using texting. And then our program also covers where if you would like, we do have residents, um, have the option to be able to text in with either a general question, maybe they're looking for the agenda for an upcoming board meeting or they want to report an issue to the town, in both of those cases, our program would auto reply to the resident so that it wouldn't fall on staff members to answer some of those frequently asked questions. So, the big thing to note is for your residents, all they have to have is a cell phone that works, they don't need to download an app or anything, just as long as they can text, they're good to go. And then for the town, we provide a web portal from where a town staff member would be able to send out alerts from. So you don't have to have a dedicated town cellphone, you don't have to have a, an, this go to anyone's personal phone, no one's going to be getting texted, you know, with the town staff at midnight or anything like that, it's all done through this web portal. So if anyone there wants to trial the program for themselves, we had set up meeting minutes is our example today. So if anyone's got their cellphone handy, you're totally welcome to text meeting minutes and then, we're out of Utah, so this is just our Utah number here. And you would text meeting minutes to that number on the screen.
You honest, Scott?
And then you'll get a, a quick reply back from our program within a few seconds.
Yeah.
Four, three, five, two, six, five, one, four, 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 six. And we'll say, meeting minutes. And it's going to say, thank you for contacting the Woodstock New Hampshire. For these, for the latest meeting minutes, please see the link below and it goes to. Whoa, just like that. Pretty cool, huh? There you go.
Exactly.
Scott?
Yeah? Yes?
I said, did you try it?
Yes, it works great.
Perfect. Once again, we just wanted to show you this texting in part is unique, but you guys would have the option to use it however you want. So if you want to start out just using it for alerts, you can do that, you can have all three, all three is going to be included there for the town for you guys to use. So what we've shown you so far is just residents texting in, but you can also have it where residents can sign up for alerts from the town. And then for residents to sign up, it's real easy, I'll zoom in on this, but this is, um, an example of the marketing material that we would create for you guys, this is a small town in Maine. So you'll notice here, they've got general notifications, emergency, board meetings, parking, road projects, they've got a bunch of different groups. They've got a bunch of different groups or alerts that residents can sign up for. And all a resident has to do is just text in whatever little bolded keyword is here, whether it's Camden General or Camden Emergency, Camden Roads. And once they text that in, they're gonna be automatically signed up for those notifications. So it makes it real easy, residents can just sign themselves up. You guys don't have to go out and get anyone's phone numbers or anything like that. And we would provide you guys with these flyers, um, information to go on the website, um, items that you could uh, go out and, and put out there to your residents and then they would just sign themselves up um, for those alerts as well. And then once again, you guys would be able to go into our web portal, type out your message and click send and that would go out to all your residents that are signing.
Is it, is it fairly easy um, for, if a resident signs up, but then they decide, oh, you know what, I don't want this? Is it fairly like, a fairly easy process for them to just say stop?
Totally, you're exactly right. They literally just text stop at any time and it will remove themselves from notifications automatically.
Okay, all of them, not just like they don't, Camden General stop or, okay.
Right, right now removes them from all the notifications. Yep. So, uh, we also wanted to go over as well, if you, if anyone has any questions about notifications about the program, let us know. Um, just in our short time here, we'd also sent a proposal out to the town and we just wanted to review that briefly with y'all as well. Um, before our meeting today, John and I, we reached out to our executives and just wanna know, hey, with the end of the year coming up, um, are there some discounts that we can provide to you guys? So they agreed, our executives, right now, the annual cost for this program is three thousand dollars. But our executives agreed that we could drop that price down to two thousand dollars. And then normally, there's, oh, go ahead, any questions?
No, I said, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you're good. Every dollar counts. We work, our smallest customer is a little town in Oklahoma, five hundred people, so we understand that. And then usually there's a one-time implementation fee for setup, um, and they've agreed to waive that as well. If it's something that the board feels like y'all would like to move on. So once again, the annual fee would go down to two thousand dollars instead of three, and then we would waive the annual fee. So the first year total would go down from four thousand five hundred down to two thousand dollars. And then each year ongoing would be the two thousand dollars.
Would be um, annual each year, like it's not just two thousand for this year and then next year it goes back to the three thousand. You would maintain that two thousand until our relationship or.
It looks like it's a two-year contract.
Yeah, but then it reverts to year to year. Or after that year to, like that year to year, we're locked in as, as long as, you know, your operational cost and skyrocket as well.
Correct, yeah, and it's uh, here in the top of the proposal as well, that it says um, service and support fees may increase in subsequent years, but will increase no more than five percent per year. So if we did ever do a price increase, it would be a max of five percent. And historically, once someone has signed on, we have not increased their annual fee. So, some things to be aware of there.
Thank you, great.
Of course. And then you guys would also get twenty-five thousand texts a year to send out to your residents. Um, also, if you're having residents text, then it will count those as well. So for example, if you had like two hundred people signed up for alerts, you send out a message to all of them, it would count as two hundred texts used. So, we don't anticipate you guys would come close to hitting twenty-five thousand in one year. And most municipalities we work with use about fifty percent of those a year. And then the unused messages will roll over to the following year for you, and you can use those as well.
For the first year, you're kind of cautious.
Right. That way, if there's an emergency or something, you gotta send out a lot of messages, then you have a, an extra bank to pull from, so. I know we're kind of there on time, so please, any questions from y'all about the program, um, costs, anything like that?
Scott, do you have any questions?
No, it sounds terrific.
Yeah. Great communication, I think.
Yeah, we appreciate.
To get our message out to, you know, to touch everybody with, so this gives, gives us another opportunity.
And more people, especially the younger generation coming up for more tests. They're not reading emails anymore.
Absolutely, and people don't want, go, lots of times wanna go to the website, they don't take the time. You're keeping people more informed, I think, on what's going on too, so.
Yeah, I've been following them for probably, what, John, two or three years now? I think I've been following them. So, and they've been doing their best to work with us, so I think.
Well, if it sounds good to y'all, we can get you over a revised proposal here, um, with the, the discounts in there as well. Um, so you guys can look at that too. So it'll just be two thousand there and then this will be crossed out, so.
Administration budget? Are you gonna disperse it amongst the three departments?
Yes, and possibly do. But we could have a vote to do um, enter into the contract.
Okay, um, so I make a motion to enter into the contract with Text My Gov. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited to work with y'all. We'll get that new paperwork to y'all tomorrow. So thanks again, everyone. Have a good night.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. Thanks for bringing it, George. Um, next, uh, we have the MOU for Clark Farms Road. Winter Maintenance Agreement.
Um, I have, haven't made any changes other than the dates to this.
Okay.
Um, that's the only thing I've touched on, on that, so unless you guys have anything.
No, this is just for the road.
The winter maintenance, yeah.
And that's worked out well. I have no issues. Scott, do you have any comments or issues?
No, and what they're doing to the road looks great too.
Alright, do I have a motion to um, sign the winter maintenance agreement with Ice Castles for Clark River?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
And Scott to sign in the office?
And Scott needs to sign in the office, don't forget.
Okay, not me.
Alright, next up, we have the memorandum of understanding for the water supply, winter water supply for Park, Farm Road, for Ice Castles LLC.
So um, there's no changes to the usage or the amount they can use daily, everything stayed the, um, the same except for um, we increased their base rate by eight percent to a lot for the electricity, chemicals. Um, the significant impact they have on us, um, cause our stuff is increasing.
Right.
So that's the only change that um, and Scott and I looked at the numbers, so that was what we were proposing.
And that makes sense, that covers.
Yeah, we felt, right, Scott, we, when we looked at everything, we felt that to the base rate would cover their.
Increase.
Yeah.
And then what does that do? I know there's been a slight talk about potentially down the road, but this, this expires in July.
Right, I, I, we'll probably raise the water rate some for sure next year.
That will be part of our water, so um, but you know, they're not, uh, the individual people aren't taxing us and using that much at once.
Okay.
And we're seeing an increase there, so.
The water, the water study's close to being done here. We're just, uh, Mike and I have to get together again and then we'll be ready for
We gotta get together on the financials of that too.
Okay.
Yep.
That was good, um, and they've given you an updated COI?
I prepared one for you guys to sign, then I'll send it to them.
Okay, a C, COI, uh, certificate of insurance.
Oh, no, that when they get theirs from us, they will send it signed back with that.
With that, okay.
This is what we're proposing to offer them and when they choose to.
Okay. So you want a, a motion to accept this MOU now and sign it, and Scott will sign it in the office?
Okay.
So I'll make that motion to sign the MOU.
Contingent on their stuff.
Contingent on receiving their COI, um, and their acceptance of the eight percent increase.
Yep.
That's applied to the.
That's already included. It went up eleven hundred dollars, eleven fifty-three or eleven thirty-five, I can't remember. Four, it was fourteen, four fifteen.
Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? The next up, we have voting.
As you all, everybody's aware, we were um, part of the pilot for the new voting devices um, being approved by the ballot commission. And since that started, Ken and I have followed them every step of the way, through every other town. We were before the ballot commission on September fifteenth. Um, and the ballot commission ended up approving two of the four, I think it came down to four, four devices. And one was the Voting Works machine, which we were following, and the other was uh, kind of a newer model to what we already have. So, they both got approved, which means that the town clerks can choose their machine, which typically, that hasn't been a thing with them. What to use if we're gonna use them. Um, so they're both out there contingent on, they both have to now go to the federal. They have to pass the federal testing labs, which is where they're at. Um, we are looking for a formal vote by the board to switch from the LHS AccuVote Dominion machine, um, and to go with Voting Works. And to sign a contract with them in the office, um, they have their sample contract here. Um, but the Secretary of State requires a formal vote of the board to notify them that that is our intention. And their contract is contingent on passing all the federal requirements. We are looking at, um, we will sign the contract now. The machines are all for seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, we will only need one machine. Um, let's see. And we're, we're looking for a formal vote from you to notify the Secretary of State, Secretary of State that our intent is to sign a contract with Voting Works. And to go with a new machine.
And so this contract would some, would also provide us with support?
Yep, they will have somebody in our area, just like LHS, they'll be in a, like a central location, you know, uh, the representative that represents multiple um, towns, they'll centrally locate that person in a hotel, as does LHS, and you know, usually within a twenty-minute ride.
Okay.
And they'll be on, I will tell you, they have come leaps and bounds from when we first had them, every recommendation that has been made, every suggestion, they have implemented everything.
Okay, from when we, we used them for a depth primary, right?
The primary, yes, and we're not, um, the, the ballot commission is not authorizing these machines for the presidential primary. Um, we will be on the old machines, um. They don't want that in the mix of it all.
Right.
And so they're hoping that we will, we could potentially be using it for March if, if they all get their certifications. Um, in time, if not, it will be then.
But it says it's set up to go already in ten minutes, that's not the one that we.
No, it's a whole different, it's totally different, when you see this, well, here's like a little picture of what it looks like now, remember how it, it actually is in this case? This case you open up and sets right on a hard ballot box, like what we kinda have now.
And you, is there any salvage recoup cost for the one that we have right now?
Well, we have two, um, and I already have some municipalities, I know, like I was just at a conference last week.
Yeah.
Saying, whoever's selling theirs, we, we might be interested. And they're not make they are, they don't have the parts to repair those.
Right.
And that's actually how I, I got my second machine, somebody was getting rid of it, I paid seven hundred and fifty dollars for it, that's the only reason we were able to get to.
So there's an opportunity there.
So, uh, we won't give Mike, but we'll get something. Um, I'll put them out there on the circuit once we're.
And we're comfortable with how, obviously, at that price, we're comfortable having one, but we're, we're okay with one. I mean, you just said we have two, we only had two because.
Right, and I actually, so, I had a, a long talk with Ben about that, that we seemed to think it was, and don't forget, when I say that's the amount, this is buying the whole thing, cause we have to get a new box, new printer, there's a laptop that comes with it. So if we were to get, purchase anything, it would just be this one unit.
Yeah.
Um, he seemed to think that that would be a waste of money and that he planned to have people in the town that would have spare ones. And if that happened, it would be, they would be there swapping out and taking.
Okay. That's some pretty good support right there.
Well, not every town is gonna vote, you know, that's the thing.
Gonna go with the Voting Works.
We will be paving. We will be paving the way for them because it's a lot not comfortable, still, yeah, this is a big change for people, um.
They'll be paying close attention to what I need to.
Yes, um, they're actually coming here on November ninth. Um, and they're going to be demonstrating to other towns here, um, we've invited them to use our facility. And Ken will be on, um, I can tell you both my moderators, both Ken and Jay, the assistant moderator, have followed with me through this whole process. And they both voted a hundred percent to move to this machine. They don't even have a, it's not even a question for them, so.
Great.
And so that's that.
So, I will make a motion to switch from the LHS AccuVote Dominion machine to the Voting Works machine. And sign the contract in the office when it's available.
As soon as they receive their federal certificates.
Yep, do I have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor? Five, great. One more vote?
Um, so, we have chosen to move forward with poll books at elections.
Okay.
For the um, town clerks. I just need a formal vote from the board to authorize us to move to poll votes. You guys have already signed a letter, but they want a formal vote.
Okay, so I make a motion to move to the polling books um, as well. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Alright, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Great. Um, other business, we have fire department. Um, and I'd like approval to hold the, oh, yeah. It's for, uh, so, and where it has reached out and, uh, would like approval to hold the fire department's annual refund fundraiser at um, Soldier's Park on November fifth from ten AM to twelve twenty-five, so, excuse me. Excellent, do I have a second? I'll second that. All those in favor?
Yep.
Five, great. Um, public pickings of fiction, any questions, comments on, any of the items on today's agenda?
Not on today's agenda, but Scott, last night I came to the planning board meeting. Um, for a follow-up on the possibility of test bores for the underground storage tank on the what's it, Sherman property? And you had said that you were going to look into that with the town engineer and I was just curious as to.
I'm sorry, I did not do that, Bill. I will do that tomorrow. I will do that tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm totally at fault with that.
On top of that, they, yeah, they've been monitoring that area, so you could probably contact the ES for information down there too.
Okay.
They've, they've had activity.
And I'll get back to you by the end of the week, Bill.
Okay, good, thank you.
Great.
And rather than submit something for another meeting, and please feel free to laugh at me if you're not listening. But for the past one, two, three, four, five. But for the past one, two, three, four, five, six years. In the town reports, the auditors have an adverse opinion on government accounting. And the wording has been exactly the same. And I'm just curious if it could be with an explanation of that.
It's because we don't spend the extra twenty thousand dollars to holler an actuary. The board voted not to. They met with, long time ago, met with. The auditors and they explained that it's because Gatsby wants you to hire an actuary and they didn't feel it was worth the money, so they chose not to do it.
Okay.
It's to do with like sick time, health insured liability, but retirement vacation.
Okay.
And that's, they just didn't feel it was worth the twenty thousand dollars, whatever it was gonna cost to meet that Gatsby requirement, so they didn't do it.
What's up?
So we just keep.
Necessary.
We just keep, it just is because uh all their audit is based on the Gatsby. And we don't need that Gatsby because we didn't choose to hire an actuary. So in order to get rid of that, you would have to hire an actuary. And actually, he's only the second person that I've ever heard say anything about it. Nicole Tewksbury has brought it up several times. Um he's the second person that I've heard.
And the only reason I do, I did is because it is written to the select. Board, it's not a real.
They had had many, the you, it wasn't your fault, but the other board, um O'Gill. Um had many meetings with the auditors and that's what it came down to.
Okay.
And they just chose not to. They didn't think it was worth it.
Right.
So it would have to be a revisit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is it worth a revisit to find out if the cost of that has come down? It's been a little several years.
How much we always spent? Our money, like every dime was coming out of the pocket. So if it was another twenty grand.
Forget it, wasn't, I mean, it doesn't. But um yes, that's what it was, and that's why we've always had it.
So for them, for their um. What they are performing, they have to put it in there that they have. Audited that portion.
Yep.
And it is not in compliance.
With Gatsby.
Right, the generally accepted.
Yep.
So if and if that does not show up there, then that exposes them.
Absolutely, that's exactly what it comes down to. Oh, we lost everything, huh?
Oh, did the TV shut off?
I don't know what happened.
No, the TV's still on. Oh, it just.
I'm still here. Lucky you.
We're ending anyways, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, at five fifty-three PM. Alright, all those in favor? Hi, thank you. Have a good night.